I'd like to call to order this committee meeting of the Board of Innen and State District 64. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Drive OJ.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcan. Lloyd. Daniels.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Dean Master.
Here.
Thank you. Move into our first discussion, item B1, the FY23 Annual Audit Report. Mr. Wald and Mr. Ike.
Thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board. Annually, MMKR does an audit of the district's prior year financials. And every year at this time, we invite Jim Ike then managing director at MMKR to come in and report on their findings. And so we welcome Mr. Ike then tonight, and we'll let him take it away and share the information that they found in the audit.
Thanks, Tim. Again, my name is Jim Ike then with MMKR CPAs. I'm here this evening to provide a presentation on the audit results for the year ended June 30th, 2023. I do have a PowerPoint that is provided. Just a point of information, we did have an opportunity to meet with a couple of representatives of the school board last week, as well as we met at the next conference. It was pretty difficult for an audit of this nature with administration as a process to the particular audit report. So I'm going to try to keep things at a high level as best you can and certainly keep, you know, answering the questions at the end of my presentation. So the role of the auditor is to provide an opinion on the district's financial statements. The district does go above and beyond normal financial statement preparation requirements by completing what's called the annual comprehensive annual financial report, an ACER, an acronym. You do submit those, that particular ACER to first for achievement in financial reporting. The district has received a certificate for excellence in financial reporting for numerous years. And certainly goes, like I said, above and beyond the normal requirements. The role of the auditor is also, on top of that, required to follow auditing standards that are nationally driven by the AICPA. As part of that, we issue opinions on your internal controls specifically related to your financial report. We also issue a single audit of federal awards, which at this particular moment is not complete. There is a requirement to complete that single audit by March 31st, which in this, for this particular year is an extended deadline. Typically, it would be December 31st. But given the volume of federal awards that are coming to local governments, Minnesota Department of Education has extended the deadline to March to assist in that reporting process. Lastly, we issue an opinion on the, your compliance with state laws and regulations, which is guided by the Office of the State Auditor in the state of Minnesota. They provide us a list of the laws that we audit, and we audit just those kinds of laws. As part of this particular audit, we also issue what's called the management report. And that management report, really my document, that provides a summary of the audit in a, in a manner that you can read through in a more summary format to give you some of the highlights without having to read through the 150-page document about. But feel free to read the 150-page document. It has exceptional information if you're looking for this. It's probably current information, but it does have a lot of in-year presentations. So in that management report, I do provide information on the audit results for the year. We were able to issue a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, on the district's annual comprehensive financial report. This year, in that particular opinion, we did emphasize a matter regarding the implementation of an accounting standard, governmental accounting standard 96 on IT technology arrangement. That particular standard follows a number of other standards regarding debt obligation, leases, IT arrangements, service contention arrangements, really around changing the standards on how you might report debt obligations in that particular area. It really doesn't change your opinion. It really just states, hey, this is important. You should be aware that this changed your opinion. So as you can see on the PowerPoint in my management report as well, we didn't have any findings to report in the district's internal controls over financial reporting. Continuing on, I mentioned the Minnesota Leo compliance audit that we do. We do have two findings in that particular area. Both of these findings are unique to this year. One of these findings is actually similar to, to the finding from last year on collateral, but the situation is completely different. So really, I characterize it as a new type of finding. The first one, as you note there, relates to the district's findings specifically related to collateral. The district is required to collateralize or have a bank collateralize any deposits that are in excess of FDIC coverage, the Minnesota statute. And that particular statute, this particular, in this year, was not complied with. So what occurred here is the district changed in and around the end of the year the broker, the investment broker that they were utilizing. And during this transition from previous broker to new broker, right around the year ended exactly at June 30th, frankly, the deposits that were being held at the previous broker exceeded the FDIC coverage. The district, in terms of communication and in terms of agreement with that particular broker, pretty much made it clear that that they should comply with the standard, and they did not. Certainly, that is a finding in our book. It is a responsibility of the district to have appropriate collateral. But in this case, it was really out of your control. So you push yourself forward a couple of days. I believe it was July 3rd, correct? The collateral was back in place and everything was appropriate. So really had a window of time here where you were out of. How we suggest in this particular meeting, audit, what does it mean to the, well, audits come with findings. So the important part of any sort of finding should be, well, what are we going to do? How are we going to correct such an arrangement so it doesn't, yeah. Well, in this case, we've already corrected. You really became aware of it. You were actually moving away from the previous broker to a new one. And so hopefully, the new broker, in this case, the best broker, follows the compliance in that particular area. Second finding relates to your compliance with public notices related to bid. Anytime the district goes out for a bid for a purchase, you are required to publish that particular bid in the local newspaper, the official newspaper of the district, notifying those that read that newspaper of the particular bid. The district actually did, in this particular case, submit a request for the newspaper to publish that particular bid, and they did not. So as it relates to that particular bid, there is no public notice, obviously. But there's very clear evidence that the actual bid should have been published by the newspaper. So again, for audit purposes, I look at that, yeah, that's a finding. It should get published. But again, it was out of the district's control. You would assume, you can assume, probably not assume, but you would hope that they would follow through on their requirements and publish that bid. Okay, back to my theme. What's the corrective action plan? Well, probably somebody at the district should be following up on those newspapers, looking at the publications, verifying, yep, there it is. We got that published. And I believe that was the corrective action. I mentioned the single audit of federal awards. Those results will be provided to the board at a later time. Previous, I mentioned the prior year findings and recommendations. We always follow up on prior year findings as part of this audit. Last year's audit related to collateral and not having enough collateral. Certainly, the district followed through on those particular, you know, requirements, and they were working with those brokers, that broker for the year until they switched, which was when the concerns went up. So really, I look at that particular finding as you did, complete the required corrective action plan as it related to last year. So I'm going to move forward to the second part of the audit results for this year. The first part being your compliance with laws and regulations and your opinions on financial report to the financial results. So my management report goes through a series of graphical presentations showing financial results, much of which relates mostly to benchmarking trend information, really giving you some information on individual results by individual fund. I'm going to touch on some of the highlights in that particular, in those particular areas. So on page seven of my report, we have a presentation on statewide fund balance. This particular presentation is intended to provide some, two pieces of data, really, what's the trends in fund balance statewide? Are fund balances globally getting higher or lower? And really give you a perspective on where the district is at at the end of the year. Be careful when you look at this particular graph. This is using statewide percentages. They are not district percentages. They're using, oh, they are district percentages, but it's not the math. So we're seeing statewide fund balances actually be very flat for almost a half a decade. And then once the pandemic hit, they went up, given the operating cycles of school districts caused less spending to provide education. And since then, they've gone down. And globally, without actually having the data for June of 2023, they will continue to go down, based on my own experience working with districts. We're seeing fund balances go down as, as federal funding is declining, as districts continue to deal with the cost of providing education, variety of funds, including salaries and benefits. You can see on that particular graph, the trend line of the district's fund balance has been declining. I think Superintendent pointed out, pointed out in 2014, there was a significant increase in fund balance in that year related to the OPEB funding that was provided, moved from the OPEB trust into this fund, related to prior year contributions. So since that time, the fund balance has been orderly or systematically and even taking an active participation in getting, getting that fund balance down to what the district would expect, would be expected levels. And you can see that that was pretty much the case until you get to, you know, 2019, when things have kind of stabilized. So for 2023, you can see that there was a decline in fund balance. And I'll actually get you show that in a different graph. This particular graph, which is on page eight, shows the, the district's revenues on all funds on a per student basis. So at fiscal 2023, the district spent $19,952 per student. That was actually a decline from the $20,246 per student. Some things that stand out in this particular page, which is very consistent in trends that we're seeing all over the city, is in the federal dollars. The federal dollars went down almost $300, $400 per student. Most of the increase in 2021 and 2022 were related to pandemic-related dollars. And as the spending of those dollars waned, you will see those federal dollars go back to the normal level. You can see on that particular graph that state aids actually increased. There was a formula increase for 2023, but most of the increase was in special education. There was an increase in special education expenditures, which typically drives the revenue side of the equation, and thus the overall state aid. The other area I'd like to point out, and this is important in the sense of comparables, at the bottom of that particular graph, shows your debt service fund revenue. And you have $2,854, which is really the second year of the referendum of debt service fund dollars. And you can see that in terms of the comparables to metro area and statewide. It's, you know, above average. Nothing concerning to something to benchmark if you look at that particular data. The next graph actually shows that same information on the expenditure side. Expenditures on a per student basis. Again, total expenditures were $20,603 per resident. Couple areas that stand out to me in this particular graph is in the area of special education. I noted earlier in my comments about the revenue side. Well, this shows the special education expenditures were higher in this particular graph, almost $300 per resident, I think. Most of that was in salaries and benefits. All of those dollars were go into the classroom for those special education students. But again, that is a costly area. It needs to be a high-cost area. You're also seeing some, you know, kind of some changes in, in other categories, but most of those relate to one-time purchases, either this year or last year, that really can swing things over. Moving forward, this is the general fund financial position. So this is really just a snapshot of, of the district's financial position over the last five years, using fund balance and cash balance as indicators of equity. Expenditure is really an indication of value. Are you getting bigger, smaller, or really changing at all? This year's fund balances in the general fund was budgeted to decline about 5.6 million. Actual results were a decline of 2.9 million. The difference is about $3 million. And you might wonder, well, you know, the results in terms of, of that particular difference, why did that occur? You know, why, why is it different than budget? Well, it's actually a perfect result in terms of an audit, something I really enjoy or I like. I like to see revenues slightly above expectations, and I like to see expenditures slightly below expectations. Perfect storm, actually. And that's what occurred here. Revenues were above budget by roughly 1.2 million. I'll go into the sun and future graph, but remember, this organization, your district, is roughly $130 million operation. And to actually get to the point of having revenues within 1.2 million is really acceptable. Very well done in terms of projecting what your results are going to be. To be that close for revenues is very, very good. On the expense side, it's the same thing. Your expenses were slightly below budget by about 1.4, 1.4 million. And again, $130 million operation to get that close on expenditure is, is a very, very good result. Why I am emphasizing so much? Why do I emphasize that particular item? For this, every meeting that I have, the budget is, is important because all of you are using that to make decisions. Each and every day, administrators, finance people, board members, look at that budget to make informed decisions. If the auditor comes here at this meeting and says, wow, that budget is way off, that really subjects you to uninformed decision. And so to have this budget come so close to expectation is important. It's important for me, for comfort level in your organization, but it's important to you in your decision-making. So very good results, exceptional. So what does that mean in terms of general fund financial position? I mentioned that the fund balance went down. At the end of the year, the district's total fund balance, as shown on the graph there, is 11.2 million. Unassigned amounts, which takes away the restricted balances, is 7.8. That represents about 6% fund balance as a percentage of operations. Actually, 5.9 to be clear. Right now, the district has a fund balance policy. The policy states that the district will strive to maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance of 8%. Right now, you're below that. Right the year before, actually, it was 7.4. So you've actually gone down even farther in that particular category. What that should mean to the, to the board and to administration is, okay, we're below our expectations. We're below our fund balance policy. Actions should be considered. I'm not here to suggest what those actions should be. I'm not, that's not my role. I am here to point out that you have a fund balance policy that, that suggests, hey, steps should be taken. And we've talked about those steps in our meetings and what that means for the board and, and, you know, Superintendent is fully aware of these discussions. So that really comes from you, from here, from this point forward. Yeah, you can expect to have further discussions on that particular policy and what, and what the district's moving towards doing. Next up, oh, I mentioned the general fund revenues, and this is a graphical presentation of that particular category. Again, revenues were, were less than budget, or excuse me, over budget by 1.2 million. Most, again, most of that is related to the special education area, which was about 1.1 million of that particular overage. This particular graph shows the expenditure categories. Again, expenditures were under budget by about 1.4 million. My notes suggest, and you can read all of this on page 14 of my report, but there were some number, other number of categories that were up and down, but the net of the, it was very, very close in the, in overall impact. But one of the things I always point out in this particular graph, you really get a sense for how much salaries and benefits are big, of the, of the volume of those two categories make up almost 90, 80% of your overall budget. And so that's an important element of that particular presentation. But again, close to budgeted expectations there. Page 15 does get into the other funds of the district. First and foremost, you have a food service fund. The food service fund was positively impacted by federal dollars in, in 2022. 2023 did see a decline in that particular category in that fund, but that was pretty much expected after 2022 and some of them back to normal operations and what was expected. You can see the, the one, the next graph up there is the community service fund. The community service fund does have a deficit fund balance. It did decline almost $800,000 in 2020, 2023. Most of that was due to programming within the extended day programs in the after-school childcare. Some of the financial results in that particular category weren't up to expectations and really causing that particular decline. Again, that, that would suggest action, again, on the part of these individuals. You really don't want to see a deficit fund balance in your community service fund. If it continues and you have that particular situation, you, it creates additional burden on your general fund. And that's really not the point of that particular fund. Lastly, some of the biggest funds, operations that we cover, and I wanted to touch on the highlights in particular. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Ike, Mr. Maurer, did you want to have?
I just wanted to clarify. So you're right about extended day, but not a significant impact of the child program.
Oh, sure.
So I just want to make sure that it wasn't, like, there's more than just one piece on that. But I just want to make sure that that was a factor.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so here's your self-insured health insurance fund. So the district is self-insured for health insurance benefits. This particular graph does show five years of financial results for this particular fund. In 2023, we did see a decline in this particular fund, which is actually pretty consistent with what most districts experience when they have self-insured funds. Pretty much once every five years, experts would say that trends happen, you know, healthcare costs and, and just, you know, it happens that, you know, people's lives and health issues happen. So self-insurance funds can be impacted by events, people's health events. And so this particular fund, albeit had a decline in this particular year, that, that is not concerning. It is really something that happens. You build those into your rates. You build those into the funding of that particular program. At the end of the day, this, this particular fund has about a 25% fund balance compared to operations. Industry standards is about 50%. So you are below expectations, but nothing alarming, nothing surprising. And there was some action items even on that, that had already occurred in terms of increasing the, the rates to accommodate some of the trends we're seeing in that fund. Yeah, so in my report, we also have some analysis. I'm not going to touch on the individual analysis of your capital funds. From an auditor perspective, the district's total spending in the particular building construction fund was about $100 million this past year. That's a lot for an auditor. We spent a tremendous amount of time in our audit, looking at those transactions and looking at invoices. And as you might expect, we go on, we, we generally look at risk in an audit, and that's a risk for us. So that large, large volume. And you could agree to that in terms of how many invoices we looked at. But the other funds, you know, are pretty much standard funds that you can read in my report and get a sense for how those funds are doing. So in summary, I was able to issue an unmodified opinion on the district's financial report. I mentioned that that opinion highlighted your implementation of an accounting standard on IT arrangements. We did have those, two findings to report. The district does issue a certificate of achievement in financial reporting, which is excellent. The general fund's, uh, fund balance was below that fund balance policy, probably the highlight, or maybe lowlight, but the important highlight, as far as the better way to put it, of all this presentation, is that particular bullet point. Financial results reflect an adherence to budget, which is so important for me as an auditor to see that. And lastly, you know, the district really takes this audit process, they feel the importance of it. And, and as an auditor, I feel that. The district is very committed to this process. The business office from top to bottom, Superintendent's office, and it really feels that this is an important element of, of the district's processes. I just wanted to highlight that as the last item. So with that, I open it up to questions that you have for me.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ike? Ms. Thompson.
No, you know, we're not here. But looking at the one slide where there was a decrease in the federal funding that we received, what was that money we had gotten for COVID that they decreased it, or? The general fund revenue slide.
Yes, that one. That's on the board.
No, it was the one with the graph. It just said that the federal sources.
This one?
Yeah, that one. I was just wondering what the decrease for the federal funds was caused from. Was that COVID funding?
Yes, absolutely. It was one-time COVID funding that fell off. Yes.
And you can anticipate that even for 2024, I would guess it's going to go down even, well, I won't say even more, but it will continue to go down until you get to a stable place.
More federal funding.
Right. Most districts are dealing with that. If you, if you listen and hear, not this district, but globally, that's one of the biggest challenges we all have. We're, we're dealing with lower federal funding, the stabilization of our financial picture. Not this district, but everybody was relying on that to bridge a gap. And now we're getting to the end of that bridge. And, and everybody's challenged by that, not just you.
Ms. Dagan, just a comment, but I really appreciate the tenure look at things. Not that I, I didn't memorize or anything, but it, but it kind of gives you a look at, at trends and at things over the years, as I've been involved in the district. So I really appreciated that. And then I was wondering about the food service. With the state funding for free lunch and breakfast, will that be reflected that it'll be the next year where we'll see that state funding go way up in that particular?
Can we ask, and maybe answer that one?
Yes, that's true. So later, we'll talk about budget, and you'll see that reflected in the revised budget for the nutrition services fund, as they were projecting more of a deficit. And they're, they're now projecting to come out ahead in the nutrition services fund for that. Yeah. Yep. So that's this year.
And the last question was the cross subsidy for special education. So there was a bump in, in that state part, right?
Correct. Yep.
Not federal. Federal is still not funding special education.
Yes, so it's up to 44%. Yes, on the state, on the state cross subsidy. Okay. And that's reflected.
Yeah. And you still need to advocate for federal funds.
Yes.
Other questions, comments?
I want to acknowledge our finance team too. Andy and her very small team of accountants and staff do a great job all summer, working with Mr. Ike then and his team of accountants to make sure all the correct reports are pulled. And it's a considerable lift. And so thank you to Andy Johnson, our Director of Finance, and that team up in finance. They really dig in deep to make sure that MMKR gets the materials they need to have a successful audit. So thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo that. This is a significant amount of work. This is a significant amount of work. And if any members of the public look through the audit report, it's 150 pages long, and that is no mean feat. So thank you very much. Thank you. Dr. Newmaster.
I had the exact same thing in my notes as I went through this yesterday and again today, printed out highlights. I appreciated immense amount of work as someone who just believes the bank, my own budget. And I can't imagine dealing with this many different funds. And as I look at the AMSD reports from the state and things like that, I mean, it's so complex, but I was glad to see that the funding has stayed there for nutrition. That was the one real positive thing. But thank you all for making this comprehensible for our non-numbers person.
Until next year, Mr. Iken.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right, we'll move into our discussion item B2. Update on the 2024-25 condition of White Bear Lake Area High School.
Thank you, Chair Ellison and members of the board. Good evening, Dr. Kazmercek, thanks for having me tonight. Excited to share some updates on where we are with bringing our two campuses together and providing a, an amazing student experience for our ninth through 12th graders starting next fall. So I'll start with sharing our, our purpose, our three questions and our four core values. These were shared with you earlier this year in the fall. But just to reiterate, it's really been the lens that I've used when making decisions about what we're planning for when we open our, our new building. So we've talked a lot with staff and students about student belonging, student agency, and student efficacy. And we've made a lot of decisions through those core values of relationships, ownership, awareness, and respect. And it's really helped guide the work of our staff this year as well as our, our student voice committee. So that continues to be a really important part of our decision-making. Since July, I've had the opportunity to meet with 90-plus certified staff. So we expect to open next year with around 145 certified teachers. We've sat down one-on-one and had 15- to 20-minute meeting, and it's really helped me understand context and history from their perspective on both campuses and, and the needs of our staff and students moving forward. I've also met with several support staff and our clerical staff, meeting monthly with our 912 administrative team, and then weekly with our steering committee. So it's no shortage of meetings. But together, we're putting together a comprehensive plan that's preparing us to open our high school. I'm going to talk a little bit about the student voice committee and how we came to this committee. I entered into our world history courses. Our juniors are taking that course. I spent about three weeks hitting every course and talking about the vision for our 912 high school and decisions that were yet to be made, and encouraged students to sign up to join a student voice committee. And we had 40 students raise their hand and say, this is something I'd like to provide some input on. And we've scheduled meetings. The first meeting was to talk about our current culture, areas that we felt we could improve on with the student experience and our, our student counselor, what they experience when they're in our buildings, where they feel a sense of belonging. What are some traditions that we're currently doing that we need to carry forward in the new building? What are some new things that you know are happening in other buildings that are opportunities for us when we come together in the fall? And then I really wanted feedback and input on them for best ways to communicate with today's youth. And so that was really interesting, because we've got this huge challenge of developing building-wide norms, values, and beliefs. And then how do we make sure that our students are understanding and, and learning those shared values, norms, and beliefs as we come together in a brand-new building with new spaces and all this flexible furniture and a new way of learning? We had some really robust conversations and great feedback from our students, from our juniors. We're going to meet again in February, and we're going to use that day to help plan the first day of school for seniors. So if you remember, that first Tuesday after Labor Day will be seniors only. The second day will be freshmen only. So we'll honor those two classes that are transitioning to that building. And then on that Thursday, we'll have a full nine-through-12 school day. So students will have input on what that first day looks like, feels like, and what are their needs in terms of empowering them to be leaders of a rather large school building. And we'll talk about kind of the, the day in the life of a student here in a second. And then our third meeting will be this spring, when the building's a little bit further along in its construction, so we can give them a tour and then we can have them help us on what's next. Like, what are some questions we need to continue to think about as we get into our summer planning? Staff had a chance to work with Dr. Dillon in October on the new spaces. So we're really thinking about, how do we rethink instruction? What is the studio experience look like and feel like for both staff and students with the flexible furniture? If you've had a chance to peek into a studio, teachers will not be assigned to a classroom. They'll meet in the morning and kind of decide based on what the lessons look like for that day within that studio, who's using what space. And when students enter the space, they'll look up on a TV screen, and they'll figure out where they're meeting for that particular day. So staff really need to create norms for their studio, how they're going to collaborate with one another, what expectations are for common or shared spaces, how they're going to use the flexible furniture and the new technology within those spaces. So we spent a lot of time on how that's going to look, and they had an opportunity to meet and learn who was in their studio next year and what that was going to look and feel like. They also had a chance to hear from students that have experienced those spaces and staff that have been teaching in those spaces to learn about best practices and what our students feel are expectations for teachers when they come into that space. So really important day, and that launched us into many of the future conversations that have taken place since then with staff and with students. So a couple of exciting events to open our building in the fall. And I thought I would share these with you, and then we'll get into more of kind of what folks can look to or, or expect to experience. We're going to start by inviting students into our building in August for what we will call ramp-up-to-school days. And this will be an opportunity for them to walk their schedule. They'll be able to receive any new technology, pick up a parking pass. We'll do a picture event so they can get their school picture taken that day. That might speed up when we can get those student IDs in their hands. So that's on August 22nd and 26th. I think it'll be a really fun time for students to get into the building and just spend as much time as they want or need to walk the building and see things. I'm really looking forward to that. We have convocation planned for all staff in the stadium on August 26th. So Dr. K will lead them through traditional convocation, and then we're going to invite them into the building at that point for all staff district-wide to have a chance to come see the new spaces. Everything should be done except the Performing Arts Center. We'll then invite students and families back for open house on August 28th. And so families, parents will have a chance to walk that building and see it. And then finally, we're planning an event for a community open house to follow. So we really thought about intentionally, how do we invite all different stakeholders through, and sort of based on, you know, who needs to see it first and, and for how long? But that's our, our grand opening plan. More information to come on those days. And then just some quick information on first day of school. Seniors on September 3rd, we'll bring in our LINK crew, which is primarily made up of juniors and seniors that will help the transition from our, for our rising ninth graders. They'll start September 4th, and then we'll have all students there on September 5th. Quickly, we're planning for around 2,700 students to enter our building that first week of school. That number could go up or down based on enrollment moving forward. Our staff contract day is 7:30 to 3:30. We're going to start with our current North Bell schedule. So our school day will start at 8:25, it will end at 3:10. We'll, we'll look to serve three lunches with around 900 students per lunch. And that'll happen during fourth period. And our class schedule will be 55-minute periods. We are planning a modified flex schedule to accommodate bare time with some changes, a name change. And then we haven't determined yet if that'll be daily or if it'll be one or two days a week, but we're working on that with staff and student feedback. Our building layout was really fun to work with, and lots of student voice and staff input determining how this building was going to lay out. It really is by tower. And if you know kind of how the towers are numbered, you can, you can pretty much find your room fairly quickly. So I use 2307 as the room example. Tower two is that first tower, it's where the main office is being housed right now. So that's the first number in the room sequence. The second number, oh, I'm sorry, the first number is the, is the floor. Is that right? It's been a while since I did this. Second floor is tower three. Okay, first number in the room sequence is the floor you're on. The second number is the tower, and then the next two numbers are the room number. So the first thing a student will do when they're looking for their room is go to the floor the room is on. That's the very first number. The second one will be to identify the tower. Tower two is social studies. Tower three is world language and language arts. Tower four is math. Tower five is our tech ed and art. Tower six has some art classrooms and some special ed classrooms. Tower seven is the original academic circle. That's going to have chemistry and ninth-grade science. It's also going to house our bar program. You'll see some business, EL, and ASL courses in tower seven as well. And then tower zero is more of your health PE tower, and tower eight is, is that fine arts area. So we'll do a, a really good job of explaining this to students, hoping to push out a video to them prior to school even starting, explaining how the building is laid out and where they can expect to find their classes. They'll have a chance to walk this. Our LINK crew will, will know this quite well before the first day of school with freshmen so that they can help our ninth graders locate their classes as well. We've done a lot of work with wayfinding. So we have several maps throughout the building that indicate where you are standing and then where you may want to be going. I also have a really, a cool thing happened. A student approached me about creating an app, a wayfinding app. And so we're, we're working on that too, where the concept would be, you enter where you are standing and where you'd like to go, and the app will show you exactly how to get there. So it's a large building, we know there's a need. It's something that we could provide as a directory at the door. I couldn't do it, but a student can. So really impressed with that, to see if we can get that done. So as you're going through the slide deck there, you can kind of see how, how the school will be laid out. The first floor, first and second floor of that original academic circle will house most of our ninth-grade programming. The first floor in the new studios will be primarily seniors. The second floor will be primarily juniors, and the third floor of that new studio addition will be primarily sophomores. It kind of fell where the science labs fall. So that's sort of how it worked out. But the other bonus to all of this is it limits how much students need to move throughout the day. And so six minutes seemed like a reasonable amount of time for passing. We may need to work with kids that are in orchestra and need to get to a third-floor math classroom. That could be a long walk, but we'll work with them on the most efficient path.
There's a lot of ways to navigate the building, a lot of different directions you can go, shortcuts.
There is, which will be fun for them to find, and I hope that they see that during those ramp-up days and during open house. One of the new concepts we need to explain to our community is our student support teams will be by alpha and not by grade level. So what we've been doing for a long time is your counselor, your AP is a grade-level counselor or associate principal. And if you have two kids in the same building, they may have different counselors and a different associate principal because they're in different grades. We're going to be able to offer comprehensive wraparound alphabet support. So in most cases, in all cases, we hope, a family will have one counselor that services all the kids, nine through 12, in their family as well as their associate principal. So you can kind of see how the alphabet split up. We have teams of one, two, four, and eight. So the math works. I'll kind of explain how this works. There's four associate principals. They'll all have a student support team that has two counselors. We have two social workers that'll serve two AP alpha teams. We have two school sites that will serve two AP alpha teams. And then we have one chemical health counselor that will serve all four teams, one equity coordinator that'll serve all four teams. And then, yeah, that will make up the, the student support teams. So the beauty of this is they're housed in the same area. So if you're a parent or a student that has a question that might need multiple people weighing in on it, you go to one place to see all of those people focused on the student support team for that alphabet. So they're broken up on second floor and third floor. We have those student support offices, if you have a chance to go through there, with large conference rooms, so it'll be a great place for us to meet and support our students. The next slide is on teacher leadership. So we continue to build this out, and I'm hoping by the end of January to have a better idea of who will be serving on these teams. An email is going to go out to staff on Friday morning. I wanted to get them through the semester and into their grading day before offering this new opportunity. But we'll have department representation on a building leadership team that will focus primarily on operations. And then we'll have department representation on a learning leadership team that's going to focus more on instruction, our collaborative inquiry time, as well as standards-based grading and some of the initiatives we're, we're looking at as we move forward. So I'm really excited about developing our teacher leaders and, and providing two rather large teams for providing input and feedback on how our building is operated and how our students are experiencing their learning. I also want to just talk about each one of these associate principal roles. So the building will open with four associate principals. They'll each have a kind of an overarching responsibility along with supporting our students in their alpha teams. The first one is building operations. So we'll have somebody that's focused on working with our student monitors, our cafeteria staff, our custodial staff, the parking lot, all of the, the pickup and drop-off that occurs throughout the day, passing time. We'll have a, a large role in behavior response. Do you have a question?
Ms. Bladen.
Keep going up.
Oh, okay.
I was just going to, when you got to the parking, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, we'll go through that for sure. It's funny, because every time I met with students, the first question when I took questions was on parking. So right now, Matt Young is, is going to take on, as an AP, is going to take on operations. And he's already working on all of our expectations and communications around how we're going to do pickup and drop-off and how the parking lot will flow and how parking passes will work and where the buses will exit the, the parking lot at the beginning and end of day. We're working on passing time and all of those wonderful things that goes into building operations. And he's doing a great job, and I feel really good about the plan that we're going to open our building with. The next one is teaching and learning. So Joe Held is going to take on leading the, the teaching and learning for our building. We'll work with our instructional coaches. Along with me, we'll, we'll do our LLT meetings, that learning leadership team meeting. We'll work on CIT together, the collaborative inquiry teams, along with standards-based grading. And then the work that we'll need to do to get. And then the work that we'll need to do to get our teachers ready for the trimester change. So a lot of scope and sequence work there we'll be working on together with Joe Held. Nate Bula is going to help with student supports. So he'll work with our special ed department along with our social workers, guidance counselors. He'll oversee that bar program, work on the eighth grade transition.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch. Who did you say?
Nate Bula. Associate Principal Nate Bula. A plan for credit recovery. He'll also help us and really we're all focused on this work, but it's just he's the person that's going to run much of the agendas and create the systems and the process that we use for each of these things. Including an advisory period and what we'll now call bear time, which is roar time, those four core values. Last one is staffing and scheduling and Associate Principal Barth, Carrie Barth, the acting principal at North Campus now, is going to work with master schedule and staffing. And that is a ton of work as we are into registration right now and planning to put together our master schedule this spring and into summer. So we're ready for a comprehensive nine through 12 building. The last one, Brian Peliquin and Adrian Turner are working on activities and athletics. And there's a lot of work here to do. We have multiple or duplicate leadership and stipends at both buildings. So if you think about a student council at both buildings, you've got to figure out what that looks like as one student council. We have ambassadors and key club that are very similar. So there's a lot of work left to do with how our school programs and affinity groups, student-led clubs, athletics, fine arts, and activities, how all of that will all function under one roof. The good news is that we should be able to simplify that process and get more kids involved. We'll set some goals around participation and try to ramp up our student interest clubs as we open the new building. So I'll stop there. Any questions on anything shared with you?
Ms. Bligh.
How many parking spots are there? For students?
Yeah, good question. So this year we had, at South Campus, we had around 550 requests and we could only fill about 475 of them. Next year, we have 775 dedicated spots for students, but you add sophomores to that equation. And not many drive. We aren't selling many passes at the North Campus right now. I think we'll be in a much better position for student parking than we have been. More opportunities. Well, it looks like we're still going to have to look at a similar process. So students will enter into a, what do we call that?
Lottery?
A lottery system. We hope that we can honor every pass that's requested. We'll set up some priorities, kids that carpool and...
There are going to be priorities?
There'll be some priorities that are set before, that will be communicated out.
Activities and those kinds of things where we can get to more?
PSEO and students that have to leave campus. So those priority, that's one of the things that Matt's working on and so we can communicate that this spring before students leave, what the process will look like and how it works. So there'll still be some surprises, I'm sure, for students that aren't paying attention. But we'll do the best we can to get that info out before the school year ends.
Is there still going to be a cost associated with it?
Still be a cost, yes. I don't see the cost changing. But we haven't discussed it yet.
Why do we have a cost associated with it?
Yeah, the cost?
You've got a person that observes it, but sitting out in the block, at least you have that. Personnel.
Cost generally offset the, or the fees generally offset the cost of supervising the parking lot, creating this safe environment out there.
But that's 700 potential spots, kind of 150 each?
I don't know.
I'm not sure what the...
I mean, you have to do by special.
Well, on the two sides of the building.
I'm saying that's a significant amount that more than covers.
It's not our goal to make money on parking. It's not our goal to make money on parking. Our goal is just to offset the costs of providing parking lot security. So, yeah, we'll do the math and if it works for us to lower it, that could happen.
Other questions? Ms. Daniels.
I know we are, I mean, there's two sides to the building. So students on both sides and buses on both sides, right? So is that evenly distributed or more so on the Bald Eagle side than the Division side? And I know there was a, I know there's something on the web.
Yeah, good question. The majority of, I won't even say the majority. Students will enter from both Bald Eagle and Division. We'll restrict the travel between the two lots, specifically when buses are entering off Bald Eagle into the bus loop. They'll enter and exit off of Bald Eagle.
All the buses?
All buses will. And then the parent drop-off, is that what we're called? Where's Marissa? She always gives me a hard time. Student drop-off. Why do I say, we're not dropping parents off, we're dropping students off. Student drop-off will take place off of Division and should fully avoid all of the bus loop traffic. So that should flow quite nicely once everyone's aware of where the drop-off should take place. It is, of course, possible for a parent to drop off off Bald Eagle, but then they could get caught up in some bus traffic on that side.
Yeah. And just because I live close, I know that they already park on Bald Eagle, so they don't have to go in. So, you know, the kids are coming out and, you know, just to avoid all that.
Right.
I mean, I get that, but it'll be nice when there's a kind of assistant place, yeah.
Lots of communication and then I think a lot of staff will be out those first few weeks helping with traffic and parking flow at the end of, or at the beginning and end of day.
About 20 minutes of intensity in the morning and about 15 in the afternoon and rest of the day is pretty quiet.
Yeah. Ms. Strickland.
Thank you.
Hi, you're welcome.
I think it's awesome how comprehensive this is. I love how the associate principals are going to have duties divvied up. This is just, you're preparing to greet this whole community. And I think you guys have done a wonderful job in including voices from the students as well. And my only question was on when they get their student support team? If they have different names, different last names within the same family, will they be adjusted to?
They will, yes. We just discussed that last week. That will be the goal, that regardless of last name, that we are making sure that family have one support team that's the same, right? So the, this summer, families can expect a postcard that indicates who their student support team, who's on that team, who supports them when they return to school. The alpha splits are done, but we haven't yet assigned all of those people. So once that's finished, we'll have a summer mailing that'll indicate who those people are and we'll have figured out all of those intricacies.
Dr. Nester.
Yeah, my second, your comment, it's really complex. And I always look at the icky-bicky of accessibility. As I've called, family members and friends around that have issues and have poor foot people in a wheelchair. And North Campus in the past had good intentions and marketplaces, but you could never get across the slush in the parking lot from where it was marked handicap accessible. So I know we said that from the get-go. Is there something that's close to an entry door that's available for people that have difficulty navigating? Winter is, I don't want to say that word, but winter is nasty.
It is.
Trying to get up into a school and whether your parent dropping off a kid who's fallen off a ski jump or someone that's an adult that's got mobility issues. That would be one of my questions. Has somebody focused on that honestly?
Probably not to the depth and degree we will need to. We do have a plan for our students that come on a bus and how we're going to get... Where drop-off is, it's much closer to the building. It'll be near the 1600 hallway if that means anything. We're doing have the map up anymore. And then obviously with the parent drop-off, it's right out, it's going to be right off the main doors. So it's not, you know, it won't be a super long walk. However, like our ADA compliant parking spaces, you know, that could still be a challenge as you're walking through that parking lot, if you're parking and coming in.
Well, I'm thinking of adults that are coming to the building for a purpose. And I spent 30 years at North and that was always bad. So that was one thing that I know I said, I hope this time they actually have parking places for mobility issues close to a door that can be easily shoveled or kept clear. Because there's nothing more aggravating. And having that side of the building marked that that's where, you know, the truly handicap accessible parking is. Because there was always a question on what was marked at North, whether it was the Division or the other side.
Well, I'm sure a lot of that planning...
Both will have accessible parking spots. For staff, there'll be more opportunities for parking near, because there'll be secure doors that they'll have key cards for. So it'll give us some flexibility there. But there'll be accessible parking on both sides. There's code for having a certain percentage of parking spots. There never is, you know, schools, you want to keep parking a bit away from your doors. And so they're as close as they can be, but they're, you know, we're still dropping off at the doors. There's a little bit of space there.
Ms. Thompson.
I didn't have a question, just a comment on the change of the student support teams and keeping them alphabetically, which then allows that counselor or school social worker or whoever they're seeing, follow that student along their whole career when instead, I know before it was a burden not only on the students and the families, but on the staff as well because if they've been working with a student and really built a bond and a relationship where that student felt comfortable sharing things that they need to talk about and then having to push them on to somebody else the next year could often, it's just not a very good way of doing things. So I really like that we're thinking ahead on that stuff and that I think will be a very beneficial thing for the staff and the students as well.
Yeah, I'm really excited about our support plan.
I have one question and one comment. My question is, 2,700 kids is a lot. And so we have students coming in from middle school into buildings that are significantly more populated. And I can see how that would be overwhelming. So are there going to be systems in place to help our freshmen or, you know, our sophomores or acclimate to that kind of a setting?
Great question. I think our challenge now will be how do we make a big school feel small, right? And there are programs in place already, so the link program that we will provide will really help our eighth graders transition in and they'll be paired with juniors or seniors that are leaders of their group that will check in with them from time to time. We're also adding an advisory period once a week, so students will have a small group of 15 to 20 students that have that one adult that they know they can go to during the school day. We have the bar program in ninth grade, so teachers are teaming together and they're in houses by color. And so their core teachers will have an opportunity once a week to talk about opportunities and challenges amongst the students that they have. So that's a really great way to help transition the students. I think the greatest way is to have them find a co-curricular that connects them to something they're interested in as well as a group of people that have similar interests, right? And so we'll start that first week with an activities rush where they'll have an opportunity to go into a gym and look at all of the different co-curricular programs that we offer, get more information. Hopefully they can get signed up for a student interest club or they can figure out fine arts or an activity that they're interested in joining. But that's the real challenge, right? Is how do we ensure that they find their, the people that they're comfortable with and can find that sense of belonging? Relationships will be a really big part of how we open up the school. Good question.
Oh, go ahead.
No, wow, we're done?
No.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to say this is really a watershed moment for us in this community. And I remember when I first heard that we were hiring a principal a full year out before the building even opened, I wasn't sure why initially, just what to expect. But it's very clear to me that the intentionality and thought that's been put in by you and all the other team members, what you're really creating is an entirely new culture, which is not an opportunity that districts have or communities have very often. And, you know, Angela and Deb and I all still have kids in this building. And those kids are going to get to see very up close how intentional this process has been. And I've got two little ones that will not know anything else other than a unified high school. So I just want to express gratitude for the work that you've done and your team to really make an effort to make this a community and not just, wow, we got a building here and a building here and now it's like Legos, you know? We put them together. So I'm just grateful for all that work.
Thank you. It's, I think the students too, I keep telling the juniors, their legacy is going to be to establish these new traditions and norms for our 912 building. It's a pretty awesome thing that they have a chance to do that too. And then hopefully every class that comes through will have a positive experience because they took the time to set the precedent. I'm really excited about that. Yeah.
If I can remember my question. So special education in years past kind of had one area where most of the setting three programs were kind of, and some of the staff was integrated into other departments. Will special education be part of all those learning studios? Will they be embedded in the office and the studios and have space in the studios and really get in there and...
They will. So each studio has one classroom within the studio dedicated to not really just special ed, but student support, right? So any student that needs a little bit extra support or a quiet place to take a test will have that resource room available to them within the studio, which is awesome. So we call those the cross-categorical special ed support programming. We do still have some cluster programming that will be in a specific area in the building. There's a special ed suite within the original academic circle. There's also another special ed suite in that 1600 hallway on the map. So we'll have a little bit of both, but a lot of our special ed services will be pushed out into our learning studios, which is also really exciting.
Have a combination. I mean, they're both necessary. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm looking forward to the possibility that the culture of nine through 12 might help keep the nine through 10 graders more in check. Since North Campus always, it happened before, so I'm kind of looking at...
I think you're going to see what great mentors juniors and seniors can be, right? Maybe not all of them, but there's going to be a lot of really great mentors.
There's a big difference out of those older kids in the building with the younger kids. They tend to, usually, they can have...
Yeah, seniors look at freshmen like they're ring bearers.
I'm looking forward to that too. There is some modeling that'll happen. Even a casual look here and there to help our students along the maturity continuum will be very helpful. I've only known large 912 high schools with the two previous stops and that is a major benefit that I think we'll experience fairly quickly.
I mean, we have a big difference between North and South Campus have, have for a long time between some of the gender issues and some battles because they're younger and so we can go to school and...
Me too.
All right, Dr. Nester.
I'm thinking of 900 kids in the cafeteria and I'm thinking of all the support there are nutrition staffs that may need. So it's, they do a wonderful job and seeing things and make... So they do a wonderful job and steam things and make lunch fun. But I hope they get all the support and an air-conditioned place to work.
Yes, both.
Good.
It'll be really interesting to just see what that looks like in terms of how quickly we can get kids through the service lines. But the facility is set up to work quite efficiently. And so I think it's possible. And it's up to 900, but we'll see how many students end up in each lunch. I'm really looking forward to that though.
Oh, and free lunch, that is a whole new thing. So-
More students are taking a hot lunch, you're right.
Yeah, so it'll be a good experience. It'll be allowed.
You know what? The space is so big and spread out. We'll see, yeah. It's, I think will be breathtaking when you enter the union and walk from one end to the other. And there's a lot, just a lot of space. Imagine seating for 1,000, you know?
And natural light.
And all the natural light pouring in and, yeah, it'd be a great space. Some outdoor seating when it's nice out, maybe not today, but today feels like spring. Today, maybe today.
I think if you're amazed how quickly, you know, you think it's gonna be logged, but like three days in, you don't even notice it anymore. You know, you've been at a large school or I've been at large schools, it's just the norm and it just, you don't even realize it.
Agreed.
Other questions for the students? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And into our last discussion, item B3, overview of the fiscal year '24 revised budget and fiscal year '25 projected budget. Ms. Johnson and Mr. Walt?
Yeah, thank you. Just a moment. So we'll start with, I'm just looking at the budget cycle that we look at whenever we discuss budget items. Really tonight, you're talking about three different budget years. We spent some time with Ms. Reikton talking about the '22-'23 budget. We're looking at the revised '23-'24 budget, really four years. And we're looking ahead to the '24-'25 and '25-'26 budget. So you get lots of numbers tonight. If you think of the budget that we're living in today, it was this time last year that we started talking about it and looking at those numbers. And we call that our projected budget. And those, this budget is what we use as our guiding document as we start to prepare for the '24-'25 school year. So it's a really important document because it's gonna guide our decisions for quite some time. Then when we get toward the end of the school year, we'll get into, in June, we'll get into the preliminary budget. And then that budget is based on assumptions, just like the budget we have now. But the assumptions will be a little bit tighter than they are now. But they're still assumptions because the critical ingredient we don't know is student enrollment. And as you know, student enrollment is a key factor determining your revenues. So that we'll bring to you in May to look at and then we'll ask you to approve that in June. That'll be our preliminary budget for '24-'25. And then the following January, we'll come in with a revised budget for '24-'25. So tonight, we're looking at revised '23-'24 and then we'll project '24-'25 and '25-'26. Okay, this, go ahead to the next one there. This slide you've seen before and we just looked at it during the truth and taxation hearing. But it's an interesting slide after our last budget cycle, last legislatum session where there was more investment in public schools. But if you look at the difference between what inflation did and what the funding to public schools was, you see that it continued to, that difference continued to widen. So you look at the blue line, this all starts in 2003 where the yellow or the orange and blue line are together. And the blue line reflects, if we take that 2003 funding level and it just adjusts for inflation every year to today, our funding would be at $8,637 for student, as opposed to the $7,281 for FY '25. The difference there of $11,206,000 would make a serious difference in the budget that we're presenting tonight. And so as you hear people talk about, well, a lot of money went to schools in the last cycle and that's true, but a lot of the money that went to schools was mandated into certain programs, not into our general fund expenditures that we can make some decisions on to support our programming. So the difference, $11,206,000. And we hope that doesn't continue to grow, but it looks like it will.
Okay, so as Tim talked about, enrollment is really the foundation of a school district's budget. And the only thing we can really say about enrollment is that we know we're gonna be wrong. So we try as hard as we can based on everything we know about the kids as they're showing up and how they have shown up to make really educated projections to, you know, lay the groundwork for our budget. What this shows is on the orange line, what we're projecting for our student enrollment for the next couple of years. And then the black is where our projection was a year ago at this time. And as you can see, we're starting to stabilize a little bit. You can see for the '23-'24 school year, a year ago, we thought we were gonna be at about 8,232 students and we're now projected to be at 8,304. So that's good news for us, for our budget. It's additional students coming in and revenue available to fund our activities. We're projecting that we're gonna still see slight decreases over the next couple of years. And really, that's because as we look at enrollment projections, what you just typically look at is what's happened in our enrollment over the last couple of years. And we all know with COVID, districts have seen, you know, decreases. We do feel cautiously optimistic that we're gonna continue to see that leveling out that we saw between last year and this school year. But we just feel it's really prudent to be conservative when we look at these enrollment projections because we know what can happen if we don't take that conservative route and have that come to bite you at the end of the school year. So we are projecting to see some decrease and that'll be reflected in the budget for this school year and then the projections going forward. So here's just a high-level summary of the budget projection for this year and going forward. There's a detailed document included in the board packet. So as Tim said, we have the preliminary budget that we're showing. So that was back in June, what we were projecting for this school year. And then the shaded column is the revised budget that we are projecting now based on what we know. I will say, as you saw, we just got those audit results finalized pretty recently. We also just very recently came to a couple tentative agreements with a couple of our groups as far as salary settlements go. So we haven't had a chance to really sharpen the pencil on a couple of items. So we're gonna continue to work really diligently on those items in the next couple of weeks. You may see some changes when we come forward in February. Hopefully we have some real strong comfort with some new numbers that might project a little bit better. And then as Tim said, just high-level projections based on what we know right now for '24 and '25. So when we present this budget projection, there's a couple of lines that we tend to focus on. The first being the orange line, so what is the change in fund balance? The difference between the revenues that we're bringing in and the expenses that we're sending out. So focusing on the revised '23-'24 column, you can see that we have, revenues are predicted to be about $137 million and then expenses of $136. So we're looking at more revenue than expense this school year of about, just shy of $1.7 million. Then that all folds down to the bottom where we have our ending fund balances. So some of our financial activity has to go into a separate fund balance that's dictated by state statute. The fund balance that we really focus on is in blue, that ending fund balance unassigned. That's where the bulk of our operations closes into. So all of our activity for this year is projecting out to give us an ending fund balance of $9,527,000. And that would put us at an ending fund balance of 7% of our total expenses. And you can see that's a little bit down from where we were predicting for the preliminary budget. It is a little bit of an increase over what you heard earlier from our audit report. We're at about 5.9%, I believe, for starting out this school year. And it is still just a little bit below what our school board policy dictates. We do have that minimum 8% fund balance that we are charged to try to attain. And keeping that 8% target in mind is kind of what we're driving budget adjustments going forward. So then we look at the next couple of years. And so we make some assumptions based on the enrollment that we just went over. Known financial increases, the state statute has already set that we'll have a 2% increase on our formula allowance for our state aid next school year. Having that rolled in, having an assumption for the following school year and having some assumptions just based on the settlements that we know we have for the following year and then what we think they might be for '25-'26. As enrollment decreases, so does our revenue. And so that's what we see reflected in the next two projected budget columns. So you can see for the '24-'25 school year, right now, we're projecting to have more expenses than revenues. And that's to the tune of about $1.4 million for next year. And then for the '25-'26 school year, we're projected right now to have about $2.9 million of deficit spending. And so that's not something that we can continue to attain as a school district. And so unfortunately, that does mean that we're gonna have to make some budget corrections. Right now, we're looking at about $1.7 million for the '24-'25 school year. And then after having those rolled into the '25-'26, having about $3.2 million of budget reductions. Again, those adjustments maintain the 7% fund balance. We're optimistic that we're gonna outperform that and get us closer to that 8%. But we'll continue to refine our estimates and see if we can get a little closer. So next steps, as I said, we're gonna continue to really sharpen the pencil. We'll come forward and at the February work, our board meeting and ask you for approval of the '23-'24 revised budget. And then we'll get to work on what those budget adjustments might be. Some of them, you know, as we have less students coming in, there's just very natural reductions that we're able to make. And then in May, we will present the preliminary budget for next school year, for the '24-'25 school year. And then in June, ask for your approval of that.
A few things I'd like to point out. One is that revised budget for '23-'24 really reflects the discipline that the board and district last year decided to take on and held itself to in terms of managing, fixing our budget, addressing the budget. So kudos to the board and to all of the administrators and staff who partook in that process. So that's a good thing. The other thing is we outperformed our enrollment projections for this year. So that's good. Andy mentioned that we saw things flatten out where things were in public schools were going down. And across the state, many school districts are seeing that flatten out. We are too. We outperformed by about 70 students. Our enrollment projections for the next two years are pretty conservative. But that's the prudent thing, prudent decision. And perhaps we'll outperform that the next few years. But we want to see, we want to see the students in the seats first. So some good things in that in a very difficult negotiating year for all of our employee groups. You know, we've been very disciplined in that and we've worked well with each of our groups and we've settled with several of them now. So, but everyone's experienced inflation. We have as a school district and what our expenses are, we know our employees are, many are struggling with inflation over the past few years. And so, you know, they were reasonable to ask for increases in their salaries and their pay in the next few years. You know, things will continue to be challenging, but we're in an okay place.
All right, any questions for Ms. Johnson or Mr. Walt? Ms. Reikoji?
I just want clarification on your comments about, have we had 7% fund balance or 5.9%?
We're at 5.9% for last school year. So we ended out last year at 5.9%. Right now, we're projected to be at 7%.
Projected.
Yep, yep.
Other questions?
Do we use our state demographer to think about enrollment as we look at birth rates? I don't know what they measure, but I mean, we use all the tools, right? So it's not, we're just, I don't know, housing starts, I don't know what all you're basically looking at. But you do it.
Yeah, we'll be getting some newer, some updated numbers from demographics soon, I think within the next few weeks. But we have our birth rates and that's what really our enrollment projections are based on. But there were lower birth rates during that period. And so we're hoping to see the developments start to, you know, more families moving into those developments as they continue to build.
Yeah. I just think that too, with our beautiful new unified high school, we might be able to draw and we have North Star. We have just, on different parts of the district, some wonderful things that might help us draw. And also some opening roll of students. Got so much going on and so great.
I think that's one of the reasons why we say that we are cautiously optimistic. And I think that's probably the reason why we're continuing to see that kind of flattening out of our enrollment over the last couple of years. So feeling optimistic about that, but feeling like we do need to be conservative and think about where just we've been in the last couple of years and projecting it out that way.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I've just always, you know, you want to be hopeful if you want to.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you very much. And then we'll move into our one operational item, C1, action on the fiscal year '23 annual audit report. Mr. Walt?
Okay, earlier this evening, you heard Jim Eikten from MMKR present on the audit for the 2022-2023 school year. At this time, we recommend that the school board approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 audit reported or report as it was presented.
I'm gonna make a correction on that. It should say accept if they're not actually-
Oh, accept, okay. Thank you.
So the recommended action is to accept the fiscal year 2022-2023 audit report as presented. Could I get a motion to accept? A motion by Dr. Neumaster and a second, second by Ms. Thompson. Any further questions or comments? All right, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Strike, Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arkin?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Neumaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We will now move into negotiations. This portion of the meeting may be closed to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals conducted pursuant to Minnesota statute 179A.01 to 179A.25. We will move out of this room upstairs. It'll take five minutes to move upstairs. If I could get a motion to move into closed session. A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second.
A second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor of moving into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign and we are in closed session.